The clock, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are being broadcast live over Van Buren Television Channel 12. Clerk Wright, would you please take the role?
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Bud.
Yes.
The clerk is present, supervisor.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. For tonight, we're going to break our usual agenda, and we're going to go immediately to a presentation by the Van Buren Civic Fund to the township of Van Buren and to the DDA, who is spearheading our building of the splash pad. Could you please come to the microphone? Ms. Bud, could you go over there? I'm going to hand this over to you guys. We're very thankful, very. Oh, there's the money. Okay. We had to round it off? Oh, that's right, that's right, okay. All right, where's the camera? We got to get this good. This is probably one of the, this is the largest donation that we've made in quite some time. Hopefully, I'm not over that deep.
It's a little quick.
Can you guys see? It's a total of $202,511 and some odd cents. The first small donation for $2,000 is to restore the Model T at the museum, so we can, they can drive it back in the parades again and bring back a little bit of nostalgia to the museum and get that thing operational. There's a lot of plans for that, so a small $2,000 is going to go to that. The $200,000 was probably the easiest and fastest vote we've made at the Civic Fund. As soon as we found out you guys were just a little bit short of this, we were happy to give you the $200,000 for the splash pad. It's exactly what the Civic Fund is supposed to be for, for brick and mortar projects to help the township out. And for those that don't know what the Civic Fund is all about, it was founded by Visteon almost 10 years ago. We've given away almost $1 million. We still have a sizable amount of money to give away, and we were only granted with a million dollars, granted a million dollars from them. So we've had, we've been fiscally responsible. We've given away hundreds of thousands of dollars from the Siren project to this project. We're just very proud to give it to the township and finish this project up. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to do this.
We won't miss out for the, for the DDA passage check.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It would be greatly appreciated. Share the event locally.
I will make sure it's the case. If Katie wasn't feeling otherwise, she would be here, but she also wanted to express her appreciation of the Civic Fund, because it's important for her to get the Model T back.
You guys can clap. Yay! Well, thank you very much. I, there's, I guess it's my job to speak for the board and say thank you. Civic Fund has done so much for, for this community, and the fact that they came and, you know, made this splash pad happen, we, we just can't, we just couldn't get over the fact that you were being so generous. So thank you very much. We're going to move on with the executive summary. Tonight, we're going to have, I assume, a short meeting. First, we're going to have a consent agenda where we pay our normal bills. We're then going to do a contract to improve in the sanitary drains in the Greenbrier HOA sewer system. We're going to rezone a residential property on Martinsville Road, and we're going to propose a revised route for Iron Bell Trail down Huron River Drive. So let's move ahead. I need an adoption for the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Supervisor, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
And I got support from Miller and Frazier. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Next, next item is, let's see, next item is adoption of the consent agenda. Trustee Frazier, would you please do that?
Read it?
Yeah, you have to read it.
The consent agenda consists of approving the work-study meeting minutes of May 20th, the closed-session meeting minutes of May 20th, the board meeting minutes of May 21st, the prepaid list of May 23rd, the prepaid list of May 30th, and the voucher list of June 4th.
Support.
Pretty quick there, all right. Hearing, there is no further, is there hearing, no further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Next item is, motion for approval, excuse me, next item would be the public hearing, which we have none today. Next item is correspondent announcements and presentations. Trustee White, would you begin?
Thank you, Supervisor. Van Buren Township Parks and Recreation Department is involved in the Summer Camp 2019. The first session is inactive currently. However, the second session will begin July 15th through August 9th, four weeks. Registration for the second session ends June 28 or until all spaces fill up. Please notice, registration is based on grade level for 2018-2019 school year, not age. For example, the tot camps are grades K and 1. The day camp is for grades 2, 3, and 4, and the twing camp is for grades 5, 6, 7, and 8. All camps are held at Van Buren Park on the South Service Drive, 50901 South Service Drive, just east of the Rosenville Road. All camps run from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Van Buren residents will be charged $475 per session. Non-residents will be $490 per session. Must pay in full. No refunds will be given a week before camp starts. Call 734-699-8921 for more information, or go to www.vanburon-mi.org. The camps include school bus transportation for those who live in Van Buren Township and the city of Belleville, one camp t-shirt for each participant, games, crafts, field trips, socialization with peers, supervision from highly-trained counselors, and a chance for a camper to just be a kid while enjoying the outdoors. This is licensed through the state of Michigan.
Mr. Martin, trustee Martin?
Tire Recycling Day. On behalf of the Township Board, we would like to thank Wayne County for sponsoring a Tire Recycling Day that took place last Saturday. This was green-lighted by Patrick Cullen from the county's Public Services Department and organized from our end by Assistant, Executive Assistant Dan Salmon and Jennifer Price and Parks and Recreation. Mario Pennard and Noah Cane Cross from Water and Sewer assisted the public in dropping off their tires. We had a big turnout for the event, nearly filling up three roll-offs with about 2,000 tires. They were disposed of free of charge to the public in an environmentally friendly way. This is definitely one of the better services provided to us by Wayne County.
Judge, Clerk Wright?
Health and Wellness Expo, Tuesday, June 18, 2019, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00. Presented by September Day Senior Center, Van Buren Township, 46425 Title Road, west of Belleville Road. Free admission with reservation prior to Tuesday, June 11. Call 734-699-8918 for your reservation. Walk-ins are $3 at the door. Exhibits, dancing, door prizes, food and fun. Expo runs from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., catered dinner at 4:00 p.m. to 5:00. Music and dancing from 4:00 to 6:00. Door prizes, door prize drawing must be present to win.
Thank you. Trustee Frazier?
Summer rocks, as you all know. So get your rocking shoes on. Come to the Senior Craft Room on Saturday, June 8, from 12 to 2:00, and you can paint a rock with words of kindness. And these rocks will be, you can either, we're going to provide the paint and the rock. All you have to do is bring your artistic ability and wear appropriate clothes in case you're a messy painter. And you can come have a good time, meet with people, paint your rock, and it'll be, if you want to leave it, it'll be sealed and hidden somewhere later, but you can take it with you if you'd like. And it's being put on by the Van Buren Parks and Recreation. That's June 8, 12 to 2, at the Senior Craft Room here at the Township Hall.
Trustee Miller?
Van Buren Township's fireworks will take place Saturday, June 29, with the rain date of June 30. The show starts at dusk at Beck Ballfields, 10200 Beck Road in Van Buren Township. There will be glow products, concessions available, along with a DJ. Need more information or directions? Please give us a call at 734-699-8921. This message is brought to you by Van Buren Parks and Recreation. Also, I'd like to announce that Van Buren Township is bringing back the Mini Summer Concert Series. This will take place at Quirk Park, at the Senior Garden Activity Area, July 10, 17, and 24. The time that the festivities kicks off is 7:00 and will go to 8:30. Some of the bands that will be featured is Topper Most and 50 Amp Fuse, so if you need any additional information, please call 734-699-8921.
Thank you, Treasurer Bill. Clerk Bud?
Just to make you know that, starting tomorrow, the museum will have a vintage wedding dress show, and that will be on, and then, along with the Belleville Area Women's Club on Thursday, 20, at 6:00, there will be a fashion show. I'd also like to announce that the Belleville High School Girls Softball Team has won the district championship. Under the coach of Sean Bellingham is the head coach, and David Brinkie is his assistant coach. There are 11 girls playing on that team. I like to say their names. Hopefully, I don't want to mispronounce anybody, but I'm going to give it a shot. Haley Bellingham plays, Cassidy Brinkie, Rachelle Frederick, Kaylee Settles, Alicia McLendon, Madison McColsky, Alexandria Mathan, Ariel Anderson, Kayla Hamilton, Kayla Hefner, and Michaela Demand. Congratulations to the girls, they've had a great season.
Congratulations, that's great. I have two things. The first thing, I just want to warn residents that we have a new intersection that suddenly is popping up, and email came through that the trustees all got. I-94 in Han, south side, I-94 enters, what do they call that? The service drive at Hanan Road. It's been increasingly getting accidents, they're developing that area now. People are used to just shooting through there, and they're, one way is a red light and another way is yellow. About last October, we first started getting it on our radar. We worked with Ramus from Wayne County. It is a Ramus intersection. Ramus has put into, for a bid, we, we wrote a letter to them, helping them. Ramus, just a few days ago, was awarded $160,000 safety grant from Suncog, with Wayne County at the lead, so in 2020, there will be a full-blown signal light there. But until then, please be careful. This, this is becoming more and more of a dangerous intersection in our town. I also want to say that we're getting lots of calls regarding broken culverts that go underneath the roads and underneath your driveways. We're getting enough of them that we're finding out that the county really isn't getting on these things. We're going to be putting out a press release, asking Van Buren Township residents to please contact us if you have broken culverts going underneath your road or underneath your driveway, or if you have a stopped-up culvert. We need to make a master list. We're going to go to Wayne County. We're going to see what we can negotiate to get, to do a township-wide sweep to get us all fixed up. This hasn't been done in 20 years. I would get involved with this right now. I don't know if we're going to be successful, but I would guess that you're not going to see this opportunity for another 20 years. So if you've got a problem, give us a call.
Supervisor, can you explain to the residents the definition of culvert?
Okay, if you have a ditch in front of your house, the ditch flows to your driveway, the driveway, and then it can't get past the driveway, so it goes through a pipe that's underneath your driveway to connect to the next ditch. That's a culvert. They call them driveway culverts. Sometimes your ditch flows to the end of the street, you can't go anywhere else. It's got to cross the street to get to the next ditch. So it goes underneath the street, and there's a culvert there. Primarily, I can think of three, where we have had people, underneath a dirt road, the culvert, the pipe, gets scraped, they scrape the road, they break open the top of the culvert, so now you have a broken culvert. And worse, they then scrape the road again, and they fill the road, the culvert or the pipe up with dirt. Now it doesn't work, it backs up, and I can say that the majority of our flooding is from these two issues. So please, if you've got this thing, contact us. And that's it. Moving on.
Oh, Supervisor, I'd just like to say, if you're not sure, because some peo, I have a culvert in front of my home, and some people aren't sure because the grass grows down there and, you know, and the water stands for a little while. I think they should call the township and have it inspected or help out.
We could do that. That wouldn't bother us.
Okay.
All right, let's see, we're already gone to, sorry. Where are we?
Public comment.
Public comment, do we have any public comment? Hearing, no, no public comment, okay. Next is unfinished business, we have none. We move now to new business. First order of business is to consider approval of the selection of Fonson Company to do the Briarwood sanitary repair in the amount of $202,000. Yes?
I can make a motion to approve the section of Fonson Company, Inc., for the Briarwood sanitary repair for an amount of $202,574 with a 10% contingency, contingency amount to be used at the discretion of the water sewer director to cover unforeseen conditions that may arise during construction.
Trustee Martin? Okay, trying to even it out, okay. Director Taylor?
This, we discussed last night, there's a 300-foot section of the sanitary main that runs underneath Briarwood Drive in the subdivision, and this was determined, it was inspected and determined that we had a belly in that line. In order to prevent any future possible backups, sewer backups in the basements, we recommended the repair of this line. So what we're going to be doing is, we are going to be replacing a 300-foot section along Briarwood Drive. There will be a number of homes that will be affected in that area. As we discussed last night, traffic will not be closed down, it'll be full access, but there will be times in which there will be construction equipment, and you may be down to restricted lanes coming in and out of the subdivision. And as we had said last night, all the properties that will be affected and impacted by this project will be restored back to where they were before the project began. Do you have any other questions? Something to answer?
So the hours, it's how long it's going to take? Sorry.
About a month is what we figure it the most.
Okay. Trustee, Frazier, the Millers?
So there's only three or four houses that are actually affected, is that correct?
There's three houses that will have the actual work performed in front of them, but when we talk about the area of impact, it's a broader area. Because of the construction equipment, that'll be in and out, and plus some of the lane closures that may take place.
Okay, and they will have their driveways replaced, their grass or whatever, the trees if they get damaged. Everything will be back to its original condition.
Yeah, there will be pictures and videos taken of all the properties prior to the construction project, so we'll have a complete record of the condition of the properties prior to the beginning of the construction, and then we'll restore all the properties that are impacted by this project.
Trustee Miller?
Director, the sanitary line is being bypassed, and you talked about the emergency backup system yesterday. Can you say how that will work exactly?
Yeah, basically, as explained last night, there will be no restriction of flow for any of the homes during this construction. There'll be a bypass and pumps that will be put in place in order to allow flow to continue. So we won't have any issues with the homes during the course of this project. And these, these, the usage of pumps and the bypasses will be not very, they won't be extended a long period of time, they'll be very short durations while we're doing some transfer of the system from one pipe to another.
Trustee Frazier? One second, is anybody else on the first go-round? Nope, okay, trustee Frazier.
I'm a little disappointed that that subdivision is only 20 years old, and the developer that put the lines in, you know, but I'm grateful that we caught, with the inspection, that we caught this problem early, because if we had not caught it early, it would cost more than $200,000, is that correct?
Well, the purpose of these inspections is to be able to make sure that we don't have these kinds of issues in the system.
All right, anybody else? Hearing, nothing further, no further discussion, all in favor? Aye opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Director. Next item is to consider the first reading of an ordinance, 0604191, to rezone a parcel. Can I get a motion? Justice, Chair Bud?
I make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance 60419 parent 1 to rezone parcel V12583105990202, otherwise known as 13414 Martinsville Road, from M1 Light Industrial to R1B Single Family Residential.
Support.
Trustee Frazier? All right, Director Akers?
The request before you is to rezone 13414 Martinsville from M1 Light Industrial to R1B Single Family Residential. The request is consistent with the township's master plan and has been recommended by the Township's Planning Commission. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair.
Yes, trustee Frazier?
Yesterday, we discussed that it costs, it's my understanding that it costs $600 to apply to get a rezoning, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we've had three cases, or is this the fourth one? Where they've rezoned?
This is the, I believe this is the fourth one.
Okay, so people have paid that amount of money, and I understand from a local realtor company that one party lost the bid that was on their house because the rezoning takes 60 to 90 days to get approved, to go through the process. So our remedy was to send the, a notice to the realtors to make them aware that this whole area is zoned Light Industrial, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
But we only sent it to the local realtors. Therefore, the local realtors belong to the Greater Metropolitan Realtor Association, which is a lot larger. There could be realtors from Ann Arbor, I've seen signs from lots of different places advertising Belleville Residence. So that really doesn't solve the problem. Usually, you're under the impression, if you are a resident, that it's residentially zoned. I mean, it seems to me that if the properties were all zoned Light Industrial at one time, then somebody had to apply for individual changes in that Light Industrial, or how did they get those houses built there? That's my question. If they didn't have residential zoning, how did they get them built in Light Industrial? That's one question. And then we discuss the, and I understand we're going to get a full report on this issue at our next, at our next June work-study. But I just want to make sure that, you know, there are people who, I think we owe it to the residents to inform the 15 people that live between Savage and Huron River Drive. I think we owe it to them to send them a letter also, alerting them to the fact that their property is still zoned Light Industrial. And I have another suggestion. There are two businesses over there. Gentle Machine and Dy and the Great Lakes Press Repair. Those are the two businesses that are there presently. Now, they're, they've been there forever, as far as I can remember. So I wonder if those folks are, you know, thinking about retiring or anything, and if they're going to ask the township to change their zoning, then maybe we should have the whole parcel done at one time to residential. And I think we're going to get questions answered on that part later.
We've begun researching it.
Okay, and I, I am in favor of refunding the three or four people that have paid the $600 if we give the, if we go forward and we give the new res, the new people on the street an opportunity to rezone at no cost. If we take that angle, then I think the other people should be reimbursed, because it should be fair treatment for all on that road.
Thank you. Anybody else? No more discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing, no further discussion, all in favor? Aye opposed? This motion goes to a second reading in two weeks. Number three, to consider approval of Resolution 201908, which would be a resolution to support a revised route for the Iron Bell Trail. Trustee Martin?
I make a motion, we approve the Resolution 2019-08, a resolution to support the revised route of the Iron Bell Trail in the Charter Township of Van Buren.
You made that?
Okay, Director Akers?
Thank you. The request before you is to adjust the route of the eastern portion of the Iron Bell Trail in Van Buren Township to extend along East Huron River Drive until it enters into Lower Huron Metro Park. The change is being recommended by the engineer who's completing the preliminary engineering study. As we had been in contact with the head of bridge maintenance at Wayne County, and they had identified that the county would be performing a bridge resurfacing project, which would include the installation of sidewalks on the bridge on East Huron River Drive. There are several potential benefits, which are highlighted in the board packet. Maybe the most significant one of them would that this proposed route would reduce the number of road crossings on the path. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Trustee Frazier?
I'd just like to say, I think it's a better choice of a route, and I believe that the county does have the plan to put the sidewalks in. They did sidewalks with the Huron Bridge, or the Waltz, yeah, the Huron Bridge, and it looks very nice with the pedestrian walkways along the sides of the lanes. So, and it will be less of a burden for us and better for our residents because they won't have to make as many crossings.
Excellent, anybody else?
Through the chair.
Trustee Martin?
You know, we had a lengthy discussion about those sidewalks yesterday, and my whole point was how Wayne County was going to commit, and did we have documentation showing that Wayne County was committing to adding those additional sidewalks? And, and they put in their email that, if possible. However, I don't feel that, based on the officials that I talked with, that Wayne County will pay for those. But even if that were the case where they wouldn't, they would still work and construct those sidewalks, so. The supervisor has assured us that he does have a written commitment on those sidewalks financially, and if the case may be that, and it's not the case, then the board will address it, and I'm sure we can use funding for that, state and federal funding, but then we'll have to also follow the rules. So I'm in favor of this, this is a good change. It, it answers a lot of difficult questions, and some of the residents were, were not happy with that Edison Lake Trail, and I don't, you know, I don't blame them to some degree, but it's got to go somewhere, so this is a, this is a good alternative, so let's move forward.
It's, it does reduce two road crossings, which makes it safer. Those road crossings are really expensive, as we just saw, we have $160,000 streetlight that's going to go in. I mean, that, they're very expensive, I would be willing to guess a quarter of a million for the road crossings alone. We've estimated $750,000 to $1 million for the bridge that has to go over the dam area. That would be eliminated from this. It may be as much as a half mile eliminated in path length. At $1 million a mile for this path, that's a half million dollars. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of money to go this way, and it's, it's going to impact more residents this way. More people will be able to use this thing, this path in our community. And we will be doing spurs, I'm sure, going into the communities, so I think it'll work out nice. Does anybody else have anything?
Does anybody else have anything?
Supervisor.
Trustee White.
There was a discussion on this yesterday, and I certainly agree with the change in the route. And I would just like to read an email from, I'll have to bring it up again, I guess, from Ally Awad from Wayne County. There was quite a bit of discussion on this, and it says, "Hi, Ron," referring to our director of planning and building, "this is nice to hear from you. We are working on Huron River Drive Bridge over Huron River. The scope of this project is deck repair rehabilitation. It is anticipated that the construction activities starts in 2020. We are planning to provide six-foot sidewalks on both sides if it is feasible. I hope this is helpful information. Keep in touch." Now, it's my opinion that if they're only going to do deck work and rehabilitation, then how can they install six-foot wide walk paths on each side? And that's something that we have taken into consideration. I am 100% in support of this, this project. I, I think it's fantastic that we can do something that will go from Bell Isle to Ironwood in the Upper Peninsula. It's going to take quite a few years, but at least it started. And I, I think that's a consideration that we need to keep in place, and we may possibly find out that we, we have to do something. It's cost a bit, bit more money when we take the path across the Huron River Drive Bridge. I think that is absolutely the best route for us on our biking path, but we need to be conscious of the fact that when it comes to the Huron River Bridge there, and it currently only has a sidewalk on one side, and they're just going to rehabilitate and, and repair some things, then I don't see how they can put in a six-foot walkway unless they extend the width of the bridge. That is a huge concern to me, and I think it's something that we should keep in our minds and be aware that we may have to go out for monies from other people who are interested in this, and actually from the, the trail itself. And I'm sure that once it's completed, which may be 20 or 30 years, it will take a while to go from Ironwood to Bell Isle, then I think it'll be fantastic and great.
Supervisor, if I ask, if I can ask one more question. So this sidewalk, will this be the actual bike trail portion or the walking trail portion?
They're both the same.
Well, certain areas where it's, it's a safety issue, I've been told that that would be the walking portion, and that that would, that would go in and out of the path. Is that not the case here? Because if it's a biking path only, then safety's an issue there because you've got a six-inch riser there and a very short rail. And I'm sure that once it's engineered, that will be addressed, correct?
Yes. Once, once the pathway is engineered, there will be an even approach to it. There, there won't be a curb to step up. I mean, they, they would engineer it so you'd be able to go straight from the trail to the bridge and then off without having to hop a curb. As far as it being, it would be able to be used for both pedestrian and biking purposes. So, yeah, they'd be able to use it for both.
So the rail will be addressed and also, I guess, added a length because it's very short. And if you're on a bike, there's not much space between the sidewalk and that rail and the river.
I, I can't comment on the county's bridge engineering and what the safety standards are, but I do know that when they design that, it has to be designed to current safety standards for bridges. And I know there's a certain height that's required under the traffic safety manuals. I just don't know what it is.
So just keep in mind that when you're talking with Wayne County, that that needs to be addressed, Ron.
Absolutely.
That height. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further questions, all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes. Nice work, Mr. Director Akers. Thank you. Next item is reports. We have none. Next item is public comment. Anybody from the public? No? Okay. Next item is board comments. Does anybody have any board comments today?
Supervisor, I'm very disappointed that we missed the Sumter Fest. I, I think as a unit that we should do everything we can to support our fellow adjacent governments, and that is a nice parade that they put on, and we missed it. And I'm very disappointed that we did that. So I hope that next year, if possible, that we can have an organization, organized group to go and walk in the, in the Sumter Fest Parade. Also, several, for the Memorial Day memorial, we also were lacking in attendance from our board for that and supporting our veterans. Trustee Martin was there, and I assume that was your request, that he go there and speak. I went there as a resident just to sit in the audience, and I was sitting in the audience, and they came down and asked me if I would like to come up on stage and say a few words, and I did so. Trustee Martin and myself did get up and speak at the Memorial Day Parade, but I was disappointed that actually the supervisor wasn't there to represent such an important event in our community because Memorial Day, it's to honor every single person who has died serving this country, to give us the right to stand up at this podium and say the Pledge of Allegiance. And, and we should never, ever forget our veterans at Memorial Day. We should also never, ever forget the 75,000 veterans who have not returned from war, and remember that those parents of those veterans have no place to go to, nothing to know, and, and is very sad for those, and we need to honor those also. So as a unit and as a group, we need to do more civic things in our community. Thank you, sir.
Through the chair.
No, no, no. He basically mentioned me twice in that meeting, that, that, so I'm going. First of all, I was busy, I was busy on that Memorial Day, but secondly, I almost never speak on Memorial Day, and I do so because I have a fervent belief that I am not, I am not worthy to speak at those things. So I asked the two people that I thought were worthy enough to speak at those, and that was Trustee Martin and Clerk Wright, because they've served our country. I did not serve our country. And so I believe that they were the ones that should speak, and I told them that. I would have made it there, and I would have spoke if that was the case on behalf of Van Buren, but I am not, these are the people that should be speaking, and they're the ones that, that went and did this.
I agree.
But I have made almost every Memorial Day celebration for the last 10 years.
I agree that, that both Clerk Wright and Trustee Martin should speak because they are veterans, but as a supervisor, we need to represent all the veterans in our community and is part of the leader of the township's job to do that. And we're going to disagree on that, but that's the way it is.
I show up.
Chair. Memorial, Memorial Day is a special holiday, and, you know, it's really sad when we have board members point out that other board members weren't attending an event. We all go to what we, we can get to, and we all do more than our part. Memorial Day to me has a special meaning. My father passed away 50 years ago on Memorial Day. He did serve in the war. So did my uncles. So to give the impression that this board doesn't care, or that we don't attend Memorial Day events, is not true. We attend many events. We can't all get to them, but we get to what we can, and this wasn't the right forum to do this, to point out who was there and who wasn't. I applaud the ones that were there, but I, I think we can do a better job here of, of not finger pointing here. On another note, I would like to say that we have a mini concert series coming up. We dedicated over $12,000 for this series, but yet we're doing very little to advertise this as a township. When I look at our page, our website page, there's, there's nothing on this concert series under what's new. And that's, that's too bad because we want our residents to attend this event, but yet we don't have it on cable. It's not on the website, and if it is, it's buried. So how do we get out the message that, hey, we have this great series that all residents can come to, when it's not even on our cable channel or our website the way it should be advertised? It's made a few publications, but you have to have it more than one spot to get residents aware of this, and I think we all can do a better job as a township of making that happen.
Supervisor. Your turn.
You know, I think that being the 75th anniversary of D-Day, which was a pivotal point in American history, and so many lost their lives there. My best friend's dad was a medic on D-Day, and he survived and lived to tell about it. But it is such a important event. I think we need to be more conscious. I agree that we need to be more conscious of what we as a township represent, and I think we probably should make a better concerted effort to alert everybody and see which members of the board can attend something like this. I was, I was not contacted, except I did get an email or something from somebody, but I could have probably, I've changed my plans for that day, but I, and I'm sorry I didn't. I went last year, but I'm sorry I didn't. And, you know, I have, my dad served in, in the war. My, I have a nephew that's serving right now and is a, he and his wife are both committed servicemen for our country, servicemen and women for our country. So, you know, we need to look at things that are special. This was a special opportunity for the township to show a united front, that we're there together, and it shows that we're a together unit. It would have been nice, but it's okay. We didn't, but in the future, you know, maybe we can do a better effort on supporting those kind of things.
Clerk Wright.
You know, I, being a, being a veteran myself, and my, having a brother that's a Vietnam veteran that's, that's no longer with us, it's a lot of things they should have been and should have done. I think that Vietnam vets should get, should have got more representation that they did. We never did. They got misrepresented completely, and what they went through was incredible. I think everyone has their own way of remembering Memorial Day. You can't blame someone for not showing up at a special event. Everyone, I know, I normally go, but if I can't go, the supervisor did ask me to speak, and I told him I wouldn't, I wasn't able to go. I told, asked Trustee Martin, and he said he would. But I don't think, I mean, he's, think that we're worthy, that's good. If I was able, I would have went. I have, I have went before, but it's other, I think there's other ways that people represent Memorial Day. It's not, it don't have to be a public gathering. It could be a personal gathering with your family. It all depends on how, how you want to represent Memorial Day. So to sit here and bash each other, I think is wrong. It's, I mean, we can't make everything as a board. We try to make as much as we can, but no one can make every event. So to be, to show that we are, that we are united front, and we're a united board, first we had to be, we had to observe each other and make sure, and be more cautious of everyone's feeling in regards to comments that we make to, to each other. That's the first thing we need to work on, then we can build on that and move forward and be a more cohesive board. But I, I mean, that's something we just, we got to work on completely. I think we need to just go away from the bashing and, and be more sensitive of each other's feelings and thoughts.
Negative comments?
Trustee Martin, did you?
I have a comment.
Oh, sorry, Trustee, your bud.
I agree with Reggie. I don't think that somebody should sit here and condemn any of the other board members because what they can and cannot get to over the years that I've served here, I've, I have been to a lot of those services. I have also spoken at those services. My father, my brother, we're all veterans, and I'm very thankful for them, and because of them and the freedom I have, I have a family, and my family has spread out. My family was coming home that day, so I felt comfortable knowing that my father, my brother, served the country, so I have a family, and that we can enjoy our company, and also knowing that we are all very respectful for anybody who has served in this service. I have never, I have been to the veterans' services here that we put on for our veterans when the seniors do it. I've never come back to the board meeting and said, well, you and you and you weren't there, but we were there. So to want to be so easy to condemn somebody else is terribly wrong, and it certainly shows how shattered the board has come.
Through the chair. As I was saying, if you'd stop with the negative comments, and let's all work together and share any event that's coming up that we might not know about, there's your united front.
Okay. Supervisor. All right, second time.
I, I think that Trustee Martin did an outstanding job with his speech at the Veterans Memorial. And I went as a resident, and Trustee Martin was there, and when I was sitting in the crowd, they came down and talked to me, and asked me if I would be there. And I was very disappointed, and I said, you are the leader of this board of trustees, you're the face of this board of trustees, and when you mention a board of trustees, the first thing that comes out of people's mouth.
I think this is terribly wrong to sit there, and I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
No, there's no reason for that. It is his responsibility.
You know what? I got a motion, and I got a second. It is extremely wrong. I am not going to keep your schedule for you.
It's not wrong. You are supposed to support our township.
Okay.
I, I think.
You know what? I am not going to, I, I, hold on. We work as a team supposedly and go to these events. We have certain events that we go to. I do not keep your schedule. You miss so much stuff, it's not even funny, that I, I don't even bring up. But I am not going to sit here and take this because I have been to almost every single veterans' event. I give to the veterans. I have thrown fundraisers for the veterans. I do everything I can, but I don't speak at veterans' events if I can avoid it because I am not worthy of it. A person who's served should speak. You shouldn't have been able to speak.
You, you are the head of our township, and I can tell you that, that you tell us, but last, at the Christmas parade.
I made a motion in the board. I called for the motion.
At the Christmas parade.
I called for the motion.
You, you said you would have a car for me, and you didn't.
Motion to adjourn. So I've got a second.
I think this demonstrates the, the.
All in favor. I oppose. Motion passes.
Disconnect here.
We are adjourned.
It's a shame.